Good evening. Welcome to this regular scheduled business meeting of the Somerville City Council on this 22nd day of January 2024. I'd like to welcome all of our guests tonight, and first thing I would like to do is thank everybody for adjusting the time on the notice. We did, by the way, publicize it here at City Hall to let folks know that for this particular meeting, we were moving from a 6 o'clock start time to a 7:00, and that was due to our scheduled meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers on the study that we have underway now. We have those folks in. As a matter of fact, that meeting preceded this meeting, and it was a wonderful meeting. So with that said, let's get into tonight's agenda tonight. Welcome our guests, and the first item on the agenda would be the consideration of the council minutes at the meeting we held on January 8th of 2024.
Move to approve, waive the reading.
Second. Okay, council, we have a first and a second. The motion was to waive the reading. Are there any changes or amendments to those amendments as they were presented? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Public comment?
None.
No public comment. Okay. The next item on tonight's agenda, council, as we enter the new year, we're gonna, meeting by meeting, bring some folks through to give us updates. So tonight, we have the update from the Somerville Arena and Conference Center, and we're happy to have Executive Director Cindy Stumpf with us. Cindy, the floor is yours. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you all for having me this evening. As you know, I started in May, May 1st actually, as the Assistant Director, and in the beginning, it was a lot of observation, a lot of absorbing Mary Ann as much as I could. You know, she did an excellent job training, training me and procuring me, and I was able to see a lot of our big events with her in action, and I think that was very valuable to me. November 1st, I stepped into the Executive Director position, and it was kind of sink or swim. I don't know that I'm backstroking yet, but I'm keeping my head above water. It was busy months. We had three November and December, lots of great events, lots of learning, but you know, we were definitely busy. In this time, we have had some staff changes. We have almost a whole new maintenance team, and that's a difficult job, and the guys that I have, I just couldn't be more proud of them. You really need to know that building inside and out, and they've really taken initiative to step up to the plate and learn it, and they just jump in wherever, wherever they're needed, and they've been so helpful. We also added to the staff Kenzie Farrell, our new designer, and she has a background with weddings, but she has a great eye for things, and she has jumped in and become a big part of our team as well and done some great things. And of course, I think at this point, everybody knows about Oscar. We have the new chef, and with Oscar and the staff that we already had in the kitchen, I think our catering and our food has just gone to the next level, and I'm really excited about the things to come with that. Currently at the arena, we are continuing events. We had a successful Oscar night on Saturday night. We debuted some new menu items, kind of let Oscar in the kitchen show off a little bit. Minnie had some dishes, Oscar had some dishes. Another girl, Becky, who works for us makes cookies. She had her cookies there, so it was a nice evening, and I was real proud of that. With all the events we have, we've had some large events, the basketball tournament, which was a great success, wrestling, but it's also kind of highlighted some maintenance issues that we have, so I've been working on those. You may have noticed some of the lights had been out in the arena, and that has been fixed completely. I know y'all probably know I have to work with the guard on some of these things, so it takes a little bit more time than just saying, hey, let's get this done, but I have been working with, I think his name is Mike, and Charleston to get some of the bathroom issues taken care of, get some parts ordered. They have informed me they will be replacing all of our sinks. I don't have a timeline on that yet, but I think that will be helpful too, because there's sinks, you know, we have some issues with them. But some of the issues have already been fixed. I think we have like a few toilets that are still waiting on parts, but we're working on that as well. Another big thing that I've been trying to work on is getting an updated inventory of the whole, everything, including the kitchen. So I actually purchased some used iPads from the Ford to Bed when they were selling iPads, and so each department now has their own iPad. And we are in the process of getting Excel sheets set up so that they can easily keep track of what they have in maintenance, what they have as far as all of our decorations, and what we have in the kitchen, which we've started with maintenance and decorating. You know, kitchen, they're a little more stuck, like they don't have as much movement, so they're a little bit easier to start with, but I know with Oscar and his kitchen background, they'll probably be a little bit easier in the kitchen than I was expecting to begin to get that inventory. So we're working on just keeping track of everything that we have. Moving forward, I've set some goals for myself for 2024 in the arena. I'm trying to keep them small and attainable, just with it being my first year, and I know that I'm still trying to learn the ins and outs, but I still wanted them to make some sort of positive impact. So my first goal that I have set is to bring in at least two more annual conferences, two more annual events, bring in to the arena. Mary Ann has done such a good job with that over the years. We have so many people that come back year after year because of those relationships that she built, and I would like to continue those relationships, but also make some new ones as well. So you know, in order to do that, I do need to revisit the marketing plan in July. I did one in July, but I was very conservative with that because I've only been there since May. I wasn't sure really what we had, what I felt worked, what didn't work, so I really kind of kept things the same. But you know, I think by this next July, I'll have a little bit better idea. I did add one element, and that is a video. We're having a promotional video made with Force to Focus, and this will be one whole video we can use, or we can use little clips of it for social media things, so I think that's gonna be a really good, a good tool to have, but I am gonna revisit that in July and see how to move forward. Another thing that I would like to do to help bring people in is I would like to get myself out there. You know, I know, again, as busy as our schedule is, and sometimes things just kind of, you know, you get overwhelmed a little bit, but I want to set aside time to at least locally within the state this year to find a trade show and expo, or even just, you know, some of the people in my past experiences, maybe reach out, touch base, and just represent the arena in different areas of the state. And of course, you know, I just want to continue to keep that good service, keep that standard that Mary Ann has set for so many years, because word of mouth, I think, is one of our best advertising elements, so I want to keep that up as well. Another goal that I have, again, I've already kind of touched on it, is the inventory in every department, especially the kitchen. You know, I just, I'm, I like to know where everything is, and I just want, I think, I just need to be able to see what's coming and going, and I think that'll just be, make us more efficient, make us see, you know, keep things on track there. And again, I think with Oscar and his restaurant experience, that's not gonna be quite the task that I originally thought it would be. I think we should have a system in place very soon of how to keep track of that. Another goal that I have, again, that I've kind of already touched on is maintenance. Not everything is gonna be the huge projects like the bathrooms, but there are little things that I have seen, you know, that we may need to go ahead and keep in our month-to-month cycle, our day-to-day cycle, that we need to incorporate just to keep the place looking nice and up to date, you know, shampoo and carpets, making sure we're getting spots out as they happen, different things like that. So that's another goal of mine. And then finally, I would like to host one of our own events this year to bring in the community. I do, you know, working there, I have learned it is such a great asset to Somerville, and I would absolutely just love, the more people that can come in and see that, the merrier, and I would like to come up with one event. I have a few ideas, working with timing and trying to figure out what would be the best for us, but that's the other goal that I have. Other than that, we're just, we're just keeping on keeping on. The schedule's filling up, and you know, we had Oscar night, and so many people wanted, hey, you need to do this more often. Where our next available eat weekend is in May, so you know, that's a good thing. That's a real good thing, but I appreciate all of you. I think I've gotten to meet all of you and speak with all of you, and your support and your confidence in me just really means a lot, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Cindy. Let me, let me back up and also highlight Oscar night. It was a wonderful evening. The house was full. I think you had a little over 100 guests.
Yes.
Wonderful, wonderful evening. Totally positive feedback. Of course, you know, the community was already strategizing on the next event.
Yeah.
But you know, entertainment, the food, the company, it was good to see people out. Of course, you know, I kind of panicked early that morning. I called Cindy, I said, what are we gonna do in the midst of a storm? So quite frankly, I had her put out, you know, that we would refund tickets if somebody, you know, err on caution, if you can't come, don't come, we'll refund your ticket, and I think at the end of the day, she refunded two tickets. So it was a spectacular event. You and your staff are to be commended, all your staff.
Yes.
And of course, the debut of the new chef was overwhelmingly positive. So not only that, Cindy, as I come and go on a regular basis from the conference center for meetings and events, you know, it's wonderful to see the transition went smooth, and again, I like the idea that you're gonna continue to build on the foundation that's there, because ultimately, you know, as you know, your work's cut out for you every day. Every day's a new adventure, and of course, what we never want to do is give up. We want to continue to look for new events, because just like the success of the Chamber Banquet that, of course, you and your staff helped with as well, the economics that we gain off of that from the community, everybody ends up being a winner. So I commend you and your staff. Keep up the good work, and thanks for coming out today.
Thank you. Any more questions? Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Cindy. And you can take off too, because I think you got a basketball game to catch.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. The next item on the agenda, council, is the approval of an updated funding resolution for the Webster Road sidewalk project. Okay, so the actual resolution was in your packet. This brings causation for not only a resolution, but to also sign an updated draft contract. I have a draft of the actual contract. It's, we approved the resolution before. Once you approve the resolution, it allows me to also sign an updated contract. I did get the state to send a draft, although it's still in a draft form because it's going through the state process. Let's talk about the positive of this. We did put it out to bid. The bid came in higher than what, actually, it probably came in what we expected. The overrun was, let me get the exact numbers here. The project came in $63,210.97 above what was previously funded. Immediately, I reached out to the state with a request that can we, is there any way we can get the 80/20 on the additional funds? They came back just shortly and said, yep, we'll do it. So of that $63,000, we pick up an additional $50,000 from the state, and it's gonna cost us an additional $12,000 and some change. I will tell you that our total, as the resolution says, and as a matter of fact, we'll read that resolution, our total investment at 20% is $102,642.19. Let's go ahead and make it official. Let's read the resolution. At a meeting the Somerville City Council held on the 22nd day of January 2024, the following order was made and entered Transportation Alternative Project Fund Award, Construction of Sidewalk Improvements to Webster Road. Award amount was $513,210.97. As exciting as it is to put in a sidewalk, but it's unbelievable that going from Grove Street to the gravel driveway there at the pond is a $513,000 sidewalk. But that's, that's the cost of doing business when you have to conform to both federal and state rules and guidelines. The West Virginia Department of Transportation Division of Highways opened bids for the above referenced project on January 9th, 2024, with the final total project cost of $513,210.97, whereby the City of Somerville authorizes Robert Schaefer, Mayor, to enter into an agreement with the West Virginia Department of Transportation Division of Highways for the above referenced project. The City of Somerville authorizes Robert Schaefer, Mayor, to sign any and all documents and papers necessary for the completion of said project, whereas the City of Somerville agrees to abide by the rules and regulations pertaining to the TAP grant fund, including the 20% local match, which our match is $102,642.19, and I will tell you, we already had that in the budget. The majority of it was already funded, and we put in an additional $60-some thousand with an anticipation of the project overrun, so our funding was already in the budget for the $12,000 and some dollars that it's gonna take. The adoption of the foregoing motion, having been moved by, so Jim Appeling, II.
Sir.
BJ Smith, upon, so we've got a first and a second. Declared said motion duly adopted, so all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. We have approved the project. Actually, the project was approved, but the, the cost overrun, and this sidewalk, per the contract that was awarded, should be completed. I think the completion date is sometime in November of this year. I will tell you that the reason that we just have a draft is because the bid is good for 30 days, so we are scurrying real quick to get everything put in place so that at the end of the day, we honor the integrity of the 30-day valid bid of the $513,000. So thank you, council. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the Webster Road Water Systems Improvement Project Accounting Selection. Council, as this has just taken place, we actually received two, two bids for the project, and you can see, one is Griffith and Associates to handle the accounting of the project, and I thought I wrote these down. Yeah, Bennett and Dobbins. I was gonna give the amount here publicly. Okay. Griffith and Associates was 28.5, and Bennett was 30,000. I see the 30,000, but I don't see the 28.5. I see it right here. I did, I missed it up that way back in the hand. Yeah, 28.5 is Griffith and Associates. Actually, we've got a relationship previously established, a relationship with Griffith. Anytime that we've had to do a Rule 42, which is the process you go through, accounting process that you have to go through when you're doing bonds and borrowing money, Griffith and Associates in the past has worked with the city, and it's, and it's them who we, that I recommend that we approve. Not only do we have an established relationship with them, they were also just a little bit cheaper than Bennett and Dobbins. This is for them to handle the accounting of that project, which is the water upgrade project, Webster Road Water Upgrade Project. So what I would do is I would entertain a motion to approve Griffith and Associates at the price of $28,500.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. The next item on the agenda is approval of the 2324 General Fund Budget Revision Number Three. Counsel, that would be the yellow, the yellow piece that was in your packet. Let me run down that for you real quick. So we add $50,569. That's the additional, that's being added in state government grants. It's being added to the $1.4 million and some change, which brings that line item to 1.5 million. That's the additional $50,000 that we got in the 80% match in the sidewalk overrun from the state. Also, we are moving the $242,000, which is the 50% allowable opioid settlement, as restitution back into the general fund budget that we're so entitled to do. The balance of those funds set in the special account to be expended by settlement, settlement terms. So the $242,000 is added to, we're gonna add that actually to contingencies, or the bulk of it. Let me tell you how we're gonna spend that. We right now have in the budget to buy one additional police car, asking that we set another $45,000 in the police capital budget to add an additional police car. I will tell you, council, that due to some issues that we've had with our fleet, we had one vehicle that was damaged by accident, or was in an accident, we had some damage, and then we've had other issues. Some are just vehicle operation issues from the standpoint of technical aspects of them, transmission, whatnot. We've been in kind of a quagmire with our police fleet, keeping our officers in vehicles, and of course, that's even with the two additional backups that we have. We've actually had to have some police officers buddy up on the buddy system when they're on duty, two of them in one car. So we're gonna go ahead and, if approved tonight, buy two new vehicles and add them to the inventory this year. The fire department contractual, I'm asking to add another $15,000, and this will go into the call-out pay for the fire department in a real positive way. They're getting a real, real high percentage of volunteers that are coming out, responding to the fires, which is a good thing. So due to that, we didn't budget enough in the call pay line item to make sure that they get the call, call-out pay, you know, for coming out for those calls. It's the stipend that we give the fire department for the calls they make. So $15,000 goes into that line item, bringing that total line item to 275,000. And by the way, that's their contractual line item. That's not $275,000 for call-out pay. Then also, I'm asking that, of course, then there's $63,211 that's added to the police department budget, and then you can see that that amount is, includes our 12,642 match. Ferris and Festivals, I'm asking that we add $15,000 to that line item, and that's for various Ferris and Festivals and activities, city promotions that we do out of City Hall, bringing that total line item to 100,000. And again, that's not all, there's various things that are funded through that line item. Contingencies, adding, I'm asking that we had set an additional, of that 242,000, we're adding another $154,358 to the contingency line item. I was gonna try to give you a breakdown too of... Yeah, just, just, so like a couple of, like the street department contractuals, that gets real misleading because there's $2,031,150 sitting in that. We bring it up to $2,094,000. I just kind of wanted to give you a breakdown on that. We've got, of course, the $513,000 sitting in there for the sidewalk project. We've got $1,042 sitting in there for the mitigation project that we're doing on Kentucky Road, the stormwater mitigation project. And then, of course, there's $219,300 in that line item for paving, their power bill $75,000, building loan payment $62,000, and other miscellaneous stuff that breaks down. So that, that's where you come up with that $2,094,000. It's a little high right now due to the mitigation project and the sidewalk project. Okay, I'll entertain a motion for passage, and then we'll, any discussion?
Move to approve.
We got a first and a second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. The next item is the approval of the electric vehicle site host terms and conditions contract. That contract was actually sent out to you, counsel, in your packet, if you got your packet. We'll talk about that in a little bit here. So I do want you to know that I ran this contract by the city attorney, and let me get my phone here. So I just want you to know Greg's feedback on the contract. Of course, typically, we do not like the indemnification clause, they're abroad, but it's typical. Actually, when we entered into this partnership, we were already given a heads up that just about everybody that looks at it has an issue with it. The other things I want you to know, that in the event that we would ever have any problems with this site or this program, it's interpretation and enforcement is by Tennessee laws, and that's because it's an actual partnership with Tennessee Tech. They're the ones that actually got this program that is a Appalachian-type state's program, so it's many states, where they have already set a, they've already set a, one of these charging stations in Webster County and I believe Montgomery County. In this, in this particular program, we're the third person to get the electrical vehicle charging station in, in West Virginia through this program. So our site for the program as it stands right now is gonna be, and what we did is we worked with the power company to, on three-phase power. That's what it requires. I will tell you that we have two, we have two, and this will give us two in the, in the city. There's actually currently a charging station at Northside Chevrolet, and of course, they have a charging station that will be equal to the one that we're installing, which is called a DC-5, which charges all make and models of electric vehicles that are being manufactured today. So one might ask, when we looked at where we might want to set this, we're also setting this on Northside, and currently, we're working right now for this specific location on Northside, but we do have three-phase power over there. Another good thing, because of the power that this particular charging station will draw, it puts us at a new level with the power company, and from a standpoint of the installation, it's gonna be relatively inexpensive, because they'll partner with us and do a lot of the install because of the actual power that will be drawn down through the charging station. The other thing, so why did we, why did we not take the second one we had? We looked at other options, we looked at downtown, and we actually went on the other side of the road and looked at Merchant's Walk, but I will tell you that there is a planned remodel for Sheets in 2024, and they're bringing a bank of nine charging stations in that remodel. And of course, actually, that remodel right now is slated to begin in the month of April, as they've already been here to City Hall, and I don't know that they've actually been issued their building permits, but they're doing a major overhaul of the entire Sheets, and you, I don't know if you've been anywhere else in the, but I've been other places, like the one I remember. The first one I saw that was being redone is when you get off there at the stadium at, what's, what's that, what is that road? The big Sheets that's there turning the corner before you go down to the basketball stadium.
University.
Yeah. Yeah, University Avenue, that big, yeah, yeah. But anyway, they're, they're pretty much slating all their stores for these huge makeover remodels, and ours is slated to start in the month of April. So, and when they are completed, they'll add nine additional charging stations with that remodel. So anyway... So anyway, the other terms of this contract, it is a five-year deal. And technically, at the end of five years, if we don't stay in the program, it would be our expense to return the equipment to them. And of course, anytime that we, that we would terminate the program before the five years is up, which is basically going to cost the city nothing, the equipment maintenance and they even for the first three years pay a lot of the Wi-Fi expenses, so on and so forth to operate. Anyway, it's about a five-year program. At the end of five years, if we do elect at the end of five years to not participate, it is on the city to return the equipment back to Tennessee Tech.
Any, any talk of like after five years updates and so forth? Because hopefully by then it will be, it'll be quicker.
Yeah. And actually, that's even what the gentleman that's running this program said, that more than likely, there will not be a, you know, five years if there's an upgrade or change in equipment. You know, they're saying that the, the turn the equipment back was a deal that was required in the federal government language. But he said, I can assure you right now that Tennessee Tech does not want these chargers back. So they're saying, you know, that that would probably never happen. But in the event that it would, you know, I even talked to James about this today in a meeting. James said, I mean, it wouldn't take us anything to box that thing up and ship it back to them. But the professor, I want to say his name, Chin. Make sure I said that right. Anyway, he says, I'm just telling you right now, Tennessee Tech did this program. And he said, I can just assure you that we are in no way, shape, or form interested in taking any of this equipment back. He says, as a matter of fact, they can't get it shipped to you quick enough. But anyway, we're excited. What we are going to do is this will be a charging station. And when I say charging, I mean that by two forms. One, it'll be charging electric vehicles, but they will also be paying for that charge. It'll be all set up to pay. And then in dialogue with, with Northside, I think probably about the time we bring ours on for charge, that you guys are anticipating doing the same thing.
Yes, that's right now it's free, but.
Yeah. Yes. So. Okay, so what I need, counsel, is I need approval for the authorization to sign, sign this electric vehicle site host and termination, terms and conditions. And I can tell you that once I, James ships this out to him tomorrow after it's signed, the, the charging station will be on its way.
We'll trip.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
Well, we're on the same page. They aren't.
What'd you say?
We said we're on the same page.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for approval. First and a second. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Recorder's report.
Passed along in December was very slow business-wise. New businesses, four there that came on in December. Wanted to pass that along to you. Also, would like to let everybody know tomorrow evening, we'll have a planning zoning meeting that was rescheduled from one of the snow days. Tomorrow evening, it'll be 6:00 PM here in the council chamber. Primarily, we have a home rule ordinance that is definitely needing to be looked at. It allows our city code official to write citations. And it is required through home rule to have that in, in our ordinances. So we'll be fulfilling that hopefully tomorrow evening. Other than that, it's been very busy today. I saw she's probably opened 40 or 45 envelopes with BNO taxes in checks. So that's going, that's flowing really heavy right now. And the office is, they are having some minor little issues with the, with the home rule, with some of the business taxes they're sending in. Some of those taxes were reduced in half. As we remember the home rule, retail taxes, businesses are paying less. There's some corporations that haven't quite got that right yet. They're still sending their full payment as they were last year. So we're, you know, we're educating some of those folks and it's coming along real well. Kudos to Carol in her office. She's doing a fantastic job working with them. So everything's going really well. That's all I have, Robert.
Okay, thank you. Everybody got any questions? Okay, counsel, just a, just a few things real quick. First, I want to remind everybody, the council grant applications are available here at City Hall for the 2425 budget. Those applications are due by the 29th. And of course, we ask, you know, those are available to obviously people in the city limits or, it says in close proximity, I say our greater Somersville area. So the grant applications are available here. You can pick one up here or you can, you can call and I have one emailed to you. I want to highlight a couple of, a couple of things here with the city. One, I cannot say enough about the field crew for the utilities and the work that they've done here the last few days. I mean, they have absolutely been out nonstop. And so, you know, I can't say enough for the dedication. And the other thing that is, I think, really neat is to see crews helping crews. You know, we've had, we've had people from other departments step up and, and, you know, come out and help. You know, the street department's been helping, our mechanic's been out there helping. And it's just incredible to me to see the camaraderie and the teamwork among city employees in pretty tough times because, you know, just as an example, on Friday alone, they had three line breaks on Lee Street, which is just like boom, boom, boom. And, you know, they left and fixed one by the bank and then went back. They were out till 4:00 AM fixing one in front of Atkins and Young. I mean, in the midst of this incredible weather we've had. Now, I think we've been blessed, but also when it gets, when we get freezing weather like this, this is the kind of stuff that's going to take place. So the other thing I want to do is I want to say I'm glad to see Mary Ann here. And I want to say, counsel, you know, I thank you for allowing that position to be added to the city because it's incredible, the things that teamwork we've already been able to do, the things that I've been able to shift. I think now across the board, there's better attention being paid to a lot of areas. And it's been a blessing to have Mary Ann work with me and just some of the things that we've been able to accomplish. And I think there's great things ahead. So it's, and the other thing of it is, is the next thing I want to talk about is communication with you all. I'm going to have Mary Ann doing a lot of that for me. And so I know that even with the change of the meeting tonight, you know, she emailed everybody. I know that she's real good to send notices. Couple of things I want to talk about is, I know a lot of you have been strolling in here of late saying you're not getting your packets. So there's a couple of things I'd like to do to remedy that. Number one, we could email the packets to everybody and then hold the hard copies here because it really does no good for us to send hard copies and they lay in the post office and then you come in here and we make copies for, for meetings. I'll leave this up to you all. Obviously, it's important that you get this information ahead of time. But, or if, you know, and it seems like it might be, you know, some of you more than others. And, and so I don't, you know, I don't claim to know the mail route. I will tell you that by law, we meet the Open Public Meetings Act and our packets go in the mail on Wednesday, of which they have to, so that they're, they're out, you know, by the required statute of the open meeting, or the public, Open Public Meetings Act. And so, you know, sometimes it's somewhat frustrating that you're not getting them, but I'm, I'm here to help with solutions. So if you want us to email it and hold your packet here, we can do that. You know, I'm open for suggestions. What do you all think? What's that?
Can we pick them up?
You can. If you want, if you want Amy just to hold them here and then, you know, sometime, you know, you pick them up. You know, some of you may not be having any trouble. So what I'm, what I'm asking you to do is we can do this on an individual basis. We don't have to do it all the same. If you want to pick your packet up, I'm asking you to let, let Amy know. And then the other thing that we can also do is we have boxes that are established for all the departments here at City Hall. If you want to pick your stuff up and not have it mailed, we can create boxes for you all too. So all you got to do is stop by. You don't even have to really see anybody or, you know, we can get you access to boxes where your information is in the boxes. More important than anything is that you have the information and have the opportunity to review it before a meeting. So think about, you know, on individual basis, if there's something you'd like us to change in the delivery of the information to you, we're certainly willing to do it.
Yeah, I'd just seem to get mine by email and then have it here when I get here.
Okay. How about, is everybody good with that?
I'm good.
Yeah. Yeah. So let me, so let me tell you this. In the event that it's a, it's a lengthy, because quite frankly, sometimes I don't like to set it a screen and don't print it because we're going to have a hard copy for you here. But in the event it's a lengthy one and you don't want to sit in front of a computer screen to read it all, you'd like to have, all you got to do is stop by here in advance. And I'll tell you what we'll do is she'll set the hard copies on your, on your council. So all you got to do is have somebody let you in and pick your stuff up off of your council slot. That'll be your box. We'll just leave it here at your council space. Okay? Okay, that concludes the mayor's report. Any council reports? Okay, hearing none. How about a motion to adjourn? Okay, we got a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Thank you.